Okay, it is six o'clock. This is Angie Berg with Stearns County Environmental Services. I'm the Land Use Division Supervisor. I would like to welcome you all to the Fifth Ordinance Review Committee Meeting on January 25th, 2001. We're here tonight to discuss the next set of our zoning ordinance changes. Tonight, our topic is rural housing and business options. Before we get started here, I'd like to do a quick roll call. And we'll start with the county commissioners. Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Persky.
Here.
Commissioner Mergan. Commissioner Lenzmeyer. I see them. All right. And Commissioner Notch.
Here.
All right, moving on to our Planning Commission members, we have Jason Wienerman.
Here.
Sean Blackburn.
Here.
Jason Cron.
Hey.
Ken Mossman.
Here.
Mike Prowl. Jeff Bertram.
Here.
And Rich Blankish. I saw Rich. There you are, Rich. Can't hear you, but I can see you. You might want to troubleshoot with Deb so we can, we can get you. And I also see Commissioner Mergan just joined the call. So move them, everybody. And if I remember correctly, I think today we're celebrating Ken Mossman's birthday as well. So happy birthday, Ken.
That was last week when we had the Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
That was yesterday. So Jeff Bertram, happy birthday for him.
Well, happy birthday, everyone in January. Okay.
Angie, can you hear me now? This is Rich.
You're coming through. Thanks, Rich.
You bet.
Okay. Well, without further ado, we're going to go ahead and get started with our discussion for tonight. Just a quick update where we're at in our process. We're in our fifth of seven meetings. And the last set of changes that we talked about were solar and recreational vehicles. As far as the recreational vehicles and shore land, I wanted to update you all that we did send out postcards to all Riparian property owners in the county. So 7,500 postcards went out. The survey for the ordinance changes is live and it's on shapesterns.com. Hopefully, most of you on the call are signed up for that. And if you're not, please do or let me know and I can sign you up. A public hearing for the shoreline and RV changes at the county board is going to be on Tuesday, February 16th. We have gotten several calls on, on the RV section, both in favor and opposed. Nick Newman, our shoreline specialist, did receive feedback from a few shoreline contractors that we've addressed. And without any further ado, we'll get on to our topic for tonight. So again, our goal is to review the proposed standards and provide recommendations to the commissioners for a future public hearing date. This will be a review for most of you on the call, but we do have some public in attendance tonight. So our first goal of looking at zoning ordinance updates is implementing the comprehensive plan. So Planning Commission and the county board and others spent over a year and a half working on updating our comprehensive plan, listening to the public, and finding out what we could do to make our ordinance more reflective of what the, what the county is interested in. So we're going to go to rural housing options, rural tourism, and then we'll talk about our, our last, next meeting, which will be in February. So again, our, our vision for the comp plan is a very high level. Tonight, we're talking about more of the, the lower level, hundred-foot level view, the zoning code updates. We're hitting on some, some very specific policy area topics that were identified in the comprehensive plan. Ag tourism, economic development, rural housing, workforce housing. So we have some very detailed work. All right, so we're going to start first with rural tourism. And the outline for tonight is based on the same order that your packet was. So go ahead and, and follow along in there if you'd like as well. Again, we're taking a comprehensive look at rural tourism. So our comprehensive plan has a pillar section, which you all were part of, identifying and naming what that would look like for a county that can look different than a city because we don't have direct zoning control over areas in the city. So what we did in this, this slide will become very familiar to you as it has been the last few months, but this is our comprehensive plan goals and objectives. So we call out specifically rural business, agri-tourism, and artisan ag. And so this is coming directly from our comp plan. So agri-tourism, what do we mean by agri-tourism? Our comp plan calls it agri-tourism. Our ordinance calls it mostly, I would say, an ag-oriented business. So that's familiar to you. We have milk and honey cideries, we have collegeville orchards, breakfast on the farm. We have a lot of the pumpkin patch type scenarios around the fall time. Those are all under, most of them would be considered under an ag-oriented business. Ag-oriented business obviously is a CUP in the agricultural district, but there are some limitations to it. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. Rural business is also something that you see in front of your, your, your meetings in terms of limited rural business. Home occupation is a permitted use. That's, we have varying levels of rural business in the agricultural district. And so we're not going to spend a lot of time tonight talking about rural business because I think we're, we're pretty organized in how we deal with that, but it's, it's here for comparison. So the artisan ag or call it agri-tourism, really what this is getting at is we do have some ag-oriented businesses that want to expand beyond the scope of what the ag-oriented business use was originally intended for. So as the comprehensive plan called out, we are looking at calling a new district or a new use rural tourism. So this slide reflects what the proposed definition of rural tourism could look like. It's a commercial business that provides rec, relaxation or enjoyment, and emphasizes the rural and historical heritage. Uses may include but not be limited to. And I would say we've had all of these inquiries over the last 10 years. Retreat centers, crafting destinations, event centers, reception venues, holiday attractions, retail sales. So as, as you remember, when we were talking about the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of, there was a desire for more flexibility. And with flexibility is going to be gray areas. So as you're reading through and we're talking through rural tourism tonight, just, just keep that in mind. So that's our proposed definition. Some examples in the county that we've seen are, are some that you probably know of, some we've talked about before. We have Burg's Barn up near Sock Center, and they're currently operating under temporary use special event. They're limited to 12 days per year, or 15. Sorry, I think I always say 12, 15 days per year. We do have a couple of wedding barns that, that are, are needing to come into compliance, and they would fall under this rural tourism use as well. We also have, I threw up Whispering Oaks as a, as a winery. That's, that could be an ag-oriented business, but there's some discussion in some of these uses about wanting to expand to maybe allow dinners. So more of a restaurant-type use in addition to the ag-oriented business. Lastly, we threw up Avon Hills Folk School. Again, that's out in Collegeville Township, and, and they too are limited to 15, but it, there's, there's definitely some desire and some unique ideas that come forward that rural tourism would be able to capture. While I'm throwing this next slide up before I, we go any further, are there any questions so far? I know I'm kind of throwing a lot at you.
Angie, listen.
Go ahead, Jason.
Where does the vacation home rental fit? Is that here or is that somewhere else?
Perfect segue into this slide. We'll talk about that, Jason Wienerman, and then I think I did hear Rich pipe in too. So this slide represents not all, but most of our rural business options in the county. So you're not going to see every option up here because some are very specific to motor vehicle repair and things like that. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about more of the, the commercial type use in the ag area. So to your point, Jason, the vacation private home rental is, is listed here as a separate use. So these are all different uses that would, would be continued to be allowed. Our ag-oriented B&amp;Bs, home extended business, home occupation, limited rural business, vacation home rental, and then this rural tourism would be, would be a new addition to the options allowed. Rich, did you have something?
Yeah, yeah, Angie had a question. Where does the county assessor office stand on overall tourism business? It's really not ag. It's, it's, it's a business. And so my question is, is the assessor's office giving a fair shake to the business person or owner in a small town? Or a little city, smaller city in, in the county?
Rich, I could certainly throw a couple of examples that our county assessor, and Lee can pipe in if he wants as a, as an appraiser himself, but they're taxed on how they use the land. So typically, what you're going to see is a split classification. So if someone has a farm, and then they're going to have a, say they have a retail business on the side in, in the old barn. Again, I'm not the assessor. There's rules in terms of how often and how intense you use it if they were, be taxed commercially for that building or for that parking or for that use. A lot of times, our county assessor likes to say they play catch-up. So they're going to assess based on how things are used. So I could definitely throw, add them a couple of examples of our ag-oriented businesses and, and provide that to the, to the group, and you would be able to see how they are being taxed.
All right, just, just curious as far as how the county views the promotion of business. Of somewhere in our 2040 plan, there was a statement made about encouraging business strength in our rural towns. You know, so I look at this and I'm thinking, is that supporting to maintain the vitality of our, our rural communities referring to the small towns? Or are we contradicting that statement? That was in our 2040 plan? That's all I'm questioning. Help me quiet here.
No, you're, it, it's good conversation, Rich, and, and I, I won't have the answers to that. I think those are policy discussions. If you remember years ago, we had a, I got to get the name right, limited rural manufacturing district that was proposed at the county for manufacturing, limited manufacturing in the ag district. And there was significant opposition from area cities on that use, getting at some of the same topics that you just touched on. So I certainly will pause and see if anyone has any questions or thoughts on how, how they would view that.
Angie, picking up on Rich's question, what about dining and beverage? As far as if you're, if you have daily dining and beverage, does that make you a restaurant? Or can, can you be an ag business or rural tourism and have, you know, dining and beverage?
Right, Commissioner Persky, so it would be, and we're, I'm just jumping back to the definition, right? But, and then I'm going to jump to some of the performance standards for this business. So what our job as zoning administrators in our department would be is if someone comes to us with a proposal to do something, our job is to look at what does, what are they asking for? And which district, if any, does this use fit under? And what performance standard does it fit under? So if somebody came to us and wanted to build a a big box, you know, fast food restaurant out in the middle of Ashley Township, I don't think that would meet this definition of, of rural tourism. I think in a scenario like that, we would say that is a, that's considered a restaurant, and eating and drinking establishments are only allowed in the commercial district. So again, this is going to be the gray area. So if, if we do something like this, it would be intentional, and it would be something that the Planning Commission and the board is going to have to be comfortable being uncomfortable about some of these things. So with that, I'm going to just jump to the specific standards. And I think you'll have some more discussion on these items. So these are the specific standards. So when we write our staff reports for you, for your review, you know, we always list all the standards. These would be what the standards would look like. These are specific to this use. Number one and three in particular are going to be up to the Planning Commission, up to the board, your subjectivity on whether or not someone's use, proposed use, will meet these. You know, do the uses and structures have a unique and demonstratable relationship with the county? Number three, do the buildings complement or compatible with the scale of surrounding areas? It's, it's one of those things that in reviewing various other ordinances and talking with other counties, it's, it's as though you know, you know it when you see it, which again is not very black and white. So, but if we remember what we heard during our comp plan is more flexibility and allowing some, some different uses out in the, in the agricultural areas. So that's why we're bringing this to you tonight.
Angie, a question on number three that talks about surrounding exterior materials. That leaves a lot of arbitrary and subjective judgment. Do we run any risk with that kind of policy or, or subjective nature of our decisions?
I, I think, Jason, where, where the Planning Commission and the board would need to go with that is we would help on the application to show, an applicant would need to be able to demonstrate that their buildings are complementary to and compatible with. So if someone wants a, a yellow pole shed in the middle of, of a township that is, you know, typically going to be more ag and rural in nature, that might be something that isn't compatible to and compatible with the scale and character. So yes, it is subjective. In terms of looking at the, the performance standards, if there's something that, that when you're thinking of these uses that you believe we should add, you know, I think it should have to do this, or I think it should look like that, or I think it should fall under this scenario, we're certainly open to that as well.
Angie, Jeff Bertram. I, I think for the area and the activities that we're looking at, we do want it to be somewhat flexible that we can have. I mean, this is a very unique area. It's a rural area. The wedding, you know, the barn, you know, the barns that have the activities, those welding shops, automotive shops. What we've seen, it's very unique and it's, we want some flexibility, in my opinion, to cater to this area. What we are going to be concerned about, as we have shown, is shooting ranges, you know, things like that that may cause conflict. Again, we all operate under the concept that we're not supposed to be creating conflict amongst the surroundings. Well, nine out of 10 times, those other activities I mentioned earlier are not going to cause that. Some activities, fortunately a lot fewer, could. So that, I think that flexibility and that openness creates, that's why you have a Planning Commission and County Board to say, okay, this is kind of loose, but can we make this fit? Because it's not going to have an effect. Or it's going to have an effect, and can we restrict it because of that effect, negative effect it's going to have?
Thank you, Jeff.
Angie, this is Jason Cron. Now, just something for the group. I know we're talking about adding definitions right now, rural tourism and, and what falls within rural tourism. And I'm just going to ask the question, I don't know if it's right or wrong, but rather than introducing another definition, do we go back and look at, at, look at all the definitions of rural business that we have today and say, maybe we could get rid of some of these and combine them? If we want to be more flexible, maybe let's get rid of some stuff and, and open that up more. To Jeff's point, that's what the Planning Commission is there for, is to make sure there's not, you know, conflict with rural property owners. But I, one of my concerns is that this list, over time, is just going to keep getting longer and longer. We're going to have to get more and more specific with terminology, and we're going to end up having more issues in the long run. But I don't know if it's right or wrong. I just wanted to bring that up because I look at this list getting bigger, and the next time we have a comprehensive plan, it'll probably get bigger again. So maybe we can go the other way.
Thoughts or opinions on that? It would, it would take us into a different, a different look and feel, definitely, of, of, of the ordinance and how it would be set up. Thoughts on that?
Commissioner Persky. My, my concern is the, the use of flexibility. And when we use the term flexibility, does that mean bending the rules? And the reason we have a Planning Commission, the reason we have ordinance is to keep order. And so for example, let me throw out a motocross. What if I want to put in a motocross track? And I could say, why don't you people be flexible and let me put this motocross track in? I mean, it's going to be good for tourism. We'll have people from all over the state that want to do motocross, and it's a great sport, you know? Look at all the enthusiasm. However, if I was to put that out by Pleasant Acres, I don't think the folks in Pleasant Acres would like to hear those engines, you know, several nights a week and on the weekends. But we're being flexible. So I, I guess, I, I'm a little bit concerned about using the term flexibility and the bending of the rules and, and, and where this, this could take us because again, I think there are certain things about the integrity of the rural area and the community that we have to respect, and that goes with what the townships would like to see happening within their township as well.
If I could, I'd just comment on Jason and Commissioner Persky's statements. So a couple of things. The way that Stearns County zoning ordinance is written, and, and this is different and different in various jurisdictions, but the way the county's ordinance is written, and I think it's a good thing, is that it says if a use is not listed, it's prohibited. And so Jason Cron, to your point, that's why we have, what do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six, about 10. And I can tell you that, that when we adopted the ordinance in 2000, we had eight. The only thing that's been added in 20 years has been vacation home rental. This would be the, the second thing in, in, in the next go-around. But you're right, yeah, things get added. And, and, and as a zoning administrator, I don't think that's a bad thing because to your point, Joe, on motocross tracks, and that's a real issue. I don't remember if you were on the board or not yet, but we had, Commissioner Lenzmeyer was, I think Commissioner Mergan was. But if someone comes and wants to do a motocross track, and so we look at the ordinance and we say motocross track is, is not listed, therefore it's prohibited. That gets your list longer, but it also provides a little bit more structure to what you're going to see in front of you. So you can't have someone come and ask to do something that's completely out of character because it needs to fit under one of these specific criteria. Or if you make your use too general and call it, get, let's say we get rid of all these things and we end up with just two or just three, well, then you end up with even more subjectivity than if you had a list that had 10 or 12. So hopefully, that makes a little bit of sense. But you're right, Commissioner Persky, I wouldn't say it's bending the rules. You're creating the rules. So if you're, if what we heard during the comprehensive plan from the public is we need more flexibility for lots of reasons, not just zoning flexibility, but for economic development and growth and allowing people to do different things with their land that they're not able to do currently, I think that, I, I don't, I don't see it as bending the rules. You're creating the rules that allow something, somebody to do something. On the other hand, if, if the, if the group tonight says, you know what? This was, we gave it our best shot, we thought about this, we talked about it, and we just don't see event centers in Stearns County, or we don't see, you know, these rural tourism or ag-oriented businesses getting any bigger. We want to keep them in their box. And this would be an idea that you'd want to reject, and we just wouldn't go forward on a public hearing.
Also. Angie, Jason. Oh, sorry, I appreciate the clarification. I appreciate the clarification, the way that that's written, saying that you're prohibited to do something unless it's called out. That changes my comment earlier, knowing that. For comment, though, I do think that's a little messed up. If, if I'm a property owner, the premise that it's based on is I can't do something on my property unless the county says I can. That's messed up to me. I mean, the whole premise of that thought is messed up. But that being said, it's not here nor there. I'm a careful person. I'll, I'll drive on.
I wonder if the clarification or the citation of possible uses is, have best handled here? Or is it best handled when we start talking about conditional uses? Things like that? Maybe that, the, things like conditional uses and variances and so forth. Maybe that's the appropriate tool for those types of things. Also, we need to realize that the public taste and perception of uses changes over time. I, you know, I remember back in the day, we're going to these rural ballrooms. It was just a hell of a good time. I would only submit that these rural event centers have replaced that. And then plus, our, our perspective on alcohol use has changed too. But, you know, I, I think these rural event centers, that's the niche that they're filling.
Angie, Jeff Bertram. I think, I'm not sure how long they were in existence, but if 10 years ago, certainly more than that, if you would have said that there'd be weddings and barns or anniversaries, everybody would have said absolutely not. I mean, barns were family cows, and, you know, they would have never saw it. Well, but I don't think that's a bad thing. Like Lee said, the ballrooms are all gone except for one or two of them, and so this has replaced that. Nobody would have ever said that there'd be a creamery, a red and creamery in rural Ruten. Well, that's certainly not a bad thing. Where it is now, creating the right or the wrong thing in the wrong or right place can create issues. And again, that's why we are there to say, well, someplace else that might fit, but it won't fit right there. So there is some control of, again, creating conflict. If it's in the right place, all those things will work over the years. There always were auto body repair shops in rural areas, welding shops. Well, they were just allowed. Well, now they have to become permitted. Well, they certainly are needed in those areas. So it is kind of much like we talked about, a case-by-case basis, and it kind of should be because some places it may not fit.
Angie, Sean Blackburn here. I want to point out that I, I agree with Jeff entirely, and, but I also agree with everybody's points. The thing is that we're, we're kind of getting lost in all the words here, and I think we have a good idea of what we want to do and how it's structured and worded. And we already deal with this. When we took, when we talk about the area close by and whether it's compatible, and if it looks right, if it fits right, this is subjective, and it is dependent on each case. So that flexibility is built in, and I think that's what we need.
And Sean, that, that's a great segue into the next few slides, and we'll certainly not try to end it, end the discussion, but just to keep facilitating it. So if you remember, if you remember this from our comprehensive plan, we created the document called the Decision Factors. So this is going to be a document that, again, when, when people come in to meet with us, our job is to review this, these decision factors with them and say, okay, you're proposing this business in the ag area, where, you know, let's go through this with you, and, and let's see what it fits, how it fits in. And on this decision factor. with you, and let's see what it fits, how it fits in. And on this decision factor, number five, for example, is the township review. And so I know that we're going to be requesting for rural tourism and the ag-oriented businesses and some of these others, that we do get the township's review. So yes, I think the idea is that by building in the flexibility, though, we have a process. So it's not a free-for-all, right? We have a comprehensive plan that was vetted by the public and the commissioners and the planning commission, and we have tools, like the Decision Factors. We have township involvement. And not to repeat the township involvement piece, and many of you know this already, but I will repeat it for those that don't, is townships do have the option of being more restrictive. State law does allow townships to enact an ordinance that's more restrictive than the county. So that'll be explained and offered to townships. If there's one of our 35 townships that want to do something different, or they don't want to do this at all in their township, we would work with them on solidifying that. So that's a whole lot throwing at you. But another tool would be the Decision Factor. So this is the last slide that I have on rural tourism. I can back up, and we can look at different things, but I think having a little bit more dialogue, I'm hearing mostly, yes, we think amendments are recommended based on the comprehensive plan. But certainly, if there's others that think, no, we should step back, and we don't want to expand this use in our ag areas, then that would be some direction we would like to get this evening.
And there's no way to predict what potential creative uses folks might come up with. You know, if you'd asked me, maybe, well, certainly 20 years ago, possibly 15 years ago, if I would ever have a land tenant that wanted to run a paintball concession, I wouldn't have taken you seriously, but that's exactly what happened. Well, they're no longer a tenant, and I've sold the property. But, you know, opportunities arise, times change, uses change. The flexibility, I'm glad to hear that word popping up once in a while.
And this is Carol. I know we want to move on to the next piece. I do want to, I agree with everything that folks have been saying, and just want to reinforce what Jason Cronin said. Jason, I had a similar reaction when I was going through part of this. I was like, boy, are people, excuse my language, going to have to ask us when they compete? You know, I mean, there's a whole lot of opportunities that have been utilized over time on all of these different property owners. And it would be a shame that as we're trying to broaden and open up the possibilities, and as Jeff Bertram, as you were talking about, still, you know, trying to figure out what works or doesn't in an area, I hope we don't get somehow unintentionally more restrictive. You know, we're trying to empower people, not tell them they can't do anything.
Angie, Commissioner Persky, you know, and I too, I don't think we need to be so restrictive, but when it comes up to sight, sound, and smell, leaving that property, now you're affecting other people.
Oh, absolutely, Joe. My examples actually, don't laugh, because some of the retreat centers, et cetera, are in there. Shelley and I both happen to quilt. And so I was going through an array of things that neither smell or anything else, but what moves it from, I can do this anyways, to, oh my gosh, I'm going to have, you know, everybody and their mother's uncle coming out to check and make sure. So, you know, kind of that focus on health and safety, you know, when is the septic system eventually going to be enough if I have 100 quilters show up at my property? I'm joking now that, you know what I mean? So there's definitely some usage, or I was thinking, Jeff Bertram, you brought up about shooting ranges, and yes, talk about one of the real challenges, right, to try to site. But Joe, because one of the examples had been of, you know, hunting, for example, I was thinking about bow hunting, you know, somebody, or actually, this is an in-town thing, and it's barely not in our county, but in southeast St. Cloud, over by the prison, there is a biathlon trail, and what, you know, the kinds of things they needed to do. I absolutely could see something like that coming up at some point. So, Joe, I wasn't thinking about the smells or large sounds unless too many people chatting loudly gets to be a problem.
Now, you put together 100 quilters, that'll be a hell of a noise.
Yeah, I know. There are usually lots smaller than that.
Oh, that'd be a lot of chatting. God, I wouldn't put any hen house in the county to show.
Angie, Jason, we never hear, I think with the rise of experiential recreation and folks wanting to come out and do things, having this kind of plank in our comp plan and the ordinance amendment just opens up Stearns County for that opportunity. It gives young people the opportunity to allow folks to, you know, bring a bus tour out to your site and teach kids and elders and everyone about farming and the history of Stearns County. I think this would be a valuable way to say that Stearns is open for the new opportunity. Learn our history, learn our farming, we want to have you here.
Yeah, this is Steve Natch. In regards to Richard Blankish's earlier comments, you know, about the small cities, if, you know, if that's kind of going against the grain, my experience would be, it would be kind of beneficial when you have these multiple rural entities going on, because they usually end up, you know, passing through these communities and stopping. So I guess I don't see that. I see it more as a co-partner, so to speak, for the area by bringing these people there. Like the redheaded creamery, you know, those buses go through Paddle, Bruton, Belgrade, Haynesville, you know, chances are they might stop, you know? So you just kind of continue the growth of commerce, so to speak.
Well, Steve, that's similar to some of what we've seen with our bike trails, or snowmobile trails, or people canoeing on our rivers, and they're looking for ways to, you know, stop or participate along the way, too.
Any other final thoughts or comments? I think I'm hearing we want to propose, we do want to move forward with this concept. As to some of the other, you know, if I kind of threw a bomb on everyone tonight in terms of, you know, if not listed, prohibited, that could be something that the county would, we definitely would need to step back. Our zoning ordinance would need to change significantly. We would need to get legal staff involved and some consultants to look at how that would just change how we permit here. And there's obviously good and bad things about either option. So I think that, I would say for now, whatever that means, you know, a year or two, or until we're told to do something differently, if this is something you want to allow, I think this is the quickest way to see it happen, is to adopt something called rural tourism that looks something like we presented tonight. Obviously, the public hearing would happen, and we would be open to what the public would offer for change. And if the concept or the idea of prohibiting or allowing anybody to apply for something under a conditional use in any district, if there's an appetite for that, that would definitely take some time and research.
Hey, Angie, Jason Cronin, I was the one that threw that curve ball out there. I'm totally okay. I do think that's something that's probably worth looking at in the future. I certainly don't want to hold up tonight. Rural tourism, I'm cool with. I agree with a lot of the arguments made. I just think, long-term, we can look at maybe her role of the county a little different when it comes to a frustration we also heard in the review process, where people struggle understanding, what can I do, what can't I do? Maybe if we flip that and, hey, I can do things on my own property unless they're going to cause, you know, property disputes or undue environmental things, you know, there are reasons to prohibit them, obviously. But anyway, hey, thank you for the discussion. Good comments by all.
I would echo Jason's comment. Thank you for, and I don't want to cut anybody off. If there's any final comments on rural tourism, we'll take those now. Otherwise, we'll move on to our next topic.
Angie, could we just go back to the uses that you suggested?
Certainly.
Beginning? Let's just go back and just take a look at those.
On the definitions, Commissioner Persky, or? Okay, so this would be the definition, and then these would be the specific, what we call performance standards of what somebody would need to show the planning commission and the county board. So 1 and 3 are probably, like we said earlier, your differences. The rest are kind of boilerplate. I did look at-
I guess my concern, again, would be noise. In particular, I mean, for example, the shooting range, you could make it so that you can't see the shooters. You could make it so you can't see the shooters, but how are you going to control the noise on a shooting range?
And we could certainly add something in here, Commissioner Persky, specifically referencing our noise section. Just to be clear, I think you're using shooting ranges as an example, but that still is a separate use listed under the ordinance. So shooting ranges would not become rural tourism. But I understand your correlation there.
Well, let me ask, what about open-air concerts?
So, Commissioner Persky, right now, technically, and we did have somebody, if you remember, want to propose something near Sartell or Rockaway Township, St. Stephen, years ago, that could currently, under the ordinance, the way it's written, those sorts of uses could fall under temporary use special event. Those are permitted. Those are over-the-counter permits issued by the county, and somebody could have up to 15 a year of something, as long as they're meeting very minimal criteria. I would offer, though, when you say a concert, outdoor concert, there is still the large gathering requirement. So over 1,000 people requires a public hearing and a process. But, yeah, so there's kind of levels. If you think about, you know, what the county offers in terms of ordinance provisions is, you're allowed to do, you know, 15 times a year of something that seems to fit, and then if not, if you want to be something more, then you would go up to this option. Does that make sense?
I guess so. I mean, we're not changing anything that we have, presently have.
Right, and you do hit on something. The temporary use special event is something that staff internally, Shelley and I and Jen and Heidi talked about, do we lower that number, you know, from 15 to something else, in order to get some more of these uses under a conditional use permit? So there is a little bit more oversight, right? There could be hours of operation. We did not propose that tonight, but that certainly could be open for discussion. The main reason we did not propose that is because there would be a discrepancy in between those uses that are permitted under temporary use special event today, and then those that would, that number, right? So let's say Burgs Barn is an example. They're allowed to do 15 events a year. And if we move that number down to, let's say, 5 or 10, we would still treat them as a pre-existing use prior to this change. So they could do 15, but then the next guy could only do 5 unless they asked for rural tourism. That was our logic. But we're certainly open to discussion on that, if you think that would get a little bit more oversight from the board and the planning commission, and if you think that's necessary.
We have had some successful outdoor events that go on now and don't raise an eyebrow. The bluegrass shows at El Rancho Mañana seem to be popular. Obviously, it didn't happen this past season. The, I'm thinking of the Tough Man stuff that took place out at Powder Ridge. So it isn't like we're, you know, trying to, we're considering a moonshot here. Those events have taken place. They've been seemingly successful, at least our definition of success, were there any problems? And there didn't seem to be anything that was outrageous. Law enforcement would certainly let us know if there were issues. So, you know, we've had some experience with this, and it's worked out.
And Lee, I would agree with you, and a lot of communities do that. They do, you know, street dances. They'll do fireworks. They'll do those things. And they do them so that, yeah, maybe once, twice, maybe even three times during the year, they do that. But I guess, you know, having it happen every weekend would be something different for the people to have to endure. So, all right, we can move on.
Okay, good conversation. Thanks for the good talk, and obviously, you guys have taken a lot of time to review this information ahead of time as well. So that's appreciated. Okay, so next on our list for tonight is rural housing options. And again, the topics for today are the same order that we have in the packet. So we're going to start talking first about accessory dwelling units. I just threw some pictures up here. What does that mean? We're going to talk about what that means, but it means, you know, in a detached scenario, it means the photo on the right, a smaller structure on the same parcel, that would be a second dwelling unit. And attached accessory dwelling units, or what we'll call ADUs, is something that is attached. So a dwelling unit that is attached. So if you remember, in the living pillar of the Shape Stearns, our comprehensive plan, the county has a goal of supporting options that provide residents with viable options for safe, stable, and affordable homes for all stages of their lives. And again, from a zoning perspective, we do see an increased inquiries on what we like to, you know, call a granny pod or mother-in-law unit, what the zoning world phrases as ADUs or accessory dwelling units. So we're proposing this tonight as an idea. Again, this is something that we're trying to do to explore options from what we heard in the comprehensive plan. So our five pillars, again, this hits on our living pillar. We specifically talk about our living, or ADUs, rather, under our living pillar goal. We talk about supporting a mixed use of housing that's appropriate in each zoning district, and that we want to carefully manage them in shoreland. So you'll see how we're proposing to do that. Again, excerpt from the comprehensive plan, calling it out. This is certainly something that, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, we really weren't seeing a demand for this. I think we're seeing the demand trickle in. So here's the infamous slide of, again, what do we all allow? And I like this one because, and we're going to focus on the bottom section first, the non-farm housing options. So in the ag areas or in the rural areas, what do we allow and where? So, you know, these are some that you're going to be familiar with. So single-family dwellings for supportive care, that is something, oh, it looks like it shifted on my slide, too. I apologize. So supportive care, we're looking at actually eliminating that. We're not trying to eliminate single-family homes. But we would look at a supportive care is something where if you need medical, if you have medical reasons to need to live closer to somebody, that's allowed currently as an inner abuse. You see very few of those. I think maybe one or two, probably throughout the years. This accessory dwelling unit would replace that. So we would eliminate that section. Again, in red are the proposed accessory dwelling units, attached and detached, and they have various definitions. We still have duplexes, triplexes, quads, and if you can see, those are only in the rural town site and the residential one district. So that would remain because that's a more higher density option. Don't see a lot of those. You don't see any of them because they're just permitted. Guest cottages, those are allowed just in shoreland. There's provisions in the state shoreland rules about guest cottages. So the proposal you'll see will not allow accessory dwelling units in shoreland because there is a guest cottage provision if you meet certain criteria. And then lastly, multifamily, again, that would be more of an apartment-type complex, which we've never permitted in 20 years, but- which we've never permitted in 20 years, but certainly there are some out there that were pre-existing, so that would be a placeholder to keep those. So this is kind of your go-to sheet, if you're like, well, wait, how does this fit in? So here's an example of what an ADU could look like, right? It could be a basement, it could be an attached, it could be above, or it could be the detached, where it's a separate structure. So the proposed definitions are in front of you here. It's a separate, basically a separate dwelling unit that has a kitchen, sleeping area, bathrooms. And then the only difference between the attached and detached is if they're attached to each other. So the proposed definitions are what's in front of you. Here's what we would call, again, the performance standards. So accessory dwelling units attached, you'd be allowed to have one. It would have to be on the same parcel as the principal dwelling unit. The proposal is that the owner, that either the ADU or the principal structure, so the main home, either one has to be owner-occupied. You have to meet septic provisions. Number five talks about a size limitation, so the accessory dwelling unit that's attached to your house could not exceed 40% of the finished floor of the principal dwelling. So that's, again, to keep it as an accessory use, it should be smaller, or we could run the risk of basically blowing out the density provisions in the ordinance, and then you basically just have two homes everywhere. So that was the idea behind number five.
Angie, a question on the attached ADUs. Do they have separate entrances? Or could they have an entrance through the existing home?
So Jason, it could be either. The proposed changes that we're looking at don't specify. Various cities have, you know, we looked at some cities, and we actually had our comp plan consultant help us a little bit with this section, because it's a little less familiar to us. Many cities have, you know, if you think of the metro, they have very specific standards, you know, where the door can be located, what the garage door looks like, on what side of the house it needs to be on. You could certainly look at doing that. We weren't proposing that. We were proposing it to be a bit more general, but that could be an option. Any other comments on, or thoughts on the attached? I'm just going to move on to the detached.
Angie, they would all have to make appropriate building standards for new construction, or not?
So Commissioner Persky, in the state of Minnesota, in a non-code county, which we're a non-code county, which means we don't enforce, we don't inspect for the building code here, we have a few townships that do, and a number of cities that do, but in a non-code county such as Stearns, the law is still that contractors and property owners have to build to the code. There's a minimum code for building in the state of Minnesota. What that means is that the county, you do not have staff to do that. We're not trained, qualified, nor do we have provisions to enforce the code. But the answer is, the owners, the property owners are responsible, and the contractors are responsible to build towards code.
So for example, if you have an old home with two-by-four construction, and we require two-by-six construction, then they do have to build it with two-by-six construction?
The answer is, we don't do anything, because we don't enforce the code. They are responsible to know what the laws are, work with their lumberyard and contractor, and if they're doing it themselves, their responsibility is to know what the laws are and the code are. Our staff does not do that. We don't have the official control to do that. The Board would have to do something, they would have to, you'd have to adopt building code, which would be, you know, a much different discussion.
Angie, this is Jeff Mergan. I'm not sure this fits in right here, but as our farms are getting quite large, I've had this question come up. Had a farmer that wanted to build, he employs a lot of people, he wanted to build pretty much an apartment house, right, on his, next to his house. He wanted to build an eightplex there to, for his workers. Does that fit in anywhere along the line here? Any thoughts on that?
So Commissioner Mergan, we're actually going to talk about that in just a little bit. That's a proposed, another proposed use that we're throwing out to you tonight, and I think we call it workforce housing, ag employee housing. So yes, we definitely want to get your thoughts on that tonight as well.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. I'm going to throw up the detached standards, right? So this would be the bottom picture, would be a separate structure. So we're throwing out a minimum and a maximum, a minimum of 150 square feet. That correlates with when you need a permit in Stearns County. If you build something under 150, you don't need a permit. So again, 150 minimum, max would be 1,000 square feet. You know, you'd be required to meet setbacks, so those setbacks are listed here. Manufactured homes would be allowed in the Ag District as an ADU, but not in the other zoning districts. That's what we're proposing here. And I would like to say with the accessory dwelling units attached, I did look back at some permits that we've seen over the years, that there's been inquiries on somebody doing this, and without building code, again, we don't look at building plans, we don't do inspections, final inspections, we don't issue certificates of occupancy. So sometimes they'll change their plans to get their permit, and then they might build something that they really wanted to begin with. So what I think, my reason for bringing that up is that I did review some of those permits, and the size limitation of 40% for the attached, and then the 1,000 square feet, does seem appropriate based on some of the inquiries that we've had, if that helps you at all.
We're not the only game in town in terms of what's built, how it's built, et cetera, et cetera. Certainly, it makes sense that insurance companies have certain specifications on structures. You'd certainly want to be able to ensure this, and if it isn't built to meet their standards, that would be, that'd be a challenge. So that's one example. The second example would be, I can see where a lender, if they're going to borrow money to build this, they're going to want it built a certain way. They're not just going to turn you loose out there. So please remember, it isn't just about us. There are other folks that are involved in this decision.
I'm going to just make a quick comment based on your comment, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, and then I'll pause and let others talk. I'm glad that you brought that up, because we have been working with the Central Minnesota Builders Association. Steve Gottwald's been just really great to work with. He's extended invitations to us to attend their government affairs meetings, so I've done that several times. Nick Newman did it last week on the lake. They actually had it on the lake. They wanted to talk about the shoreline standards. So yes, the local government affairs committee of CMBA has reviewed this, they're very interested. So they're definitely partners in a concept like this as well. Anybody want to take, go at bat on some of these questions? Do we, is this something we want to consider, or do we want to reject a concept like this?
Angie, so seeing as these are related to the own, are the, do the dwellings have to be used by people who are related to the original owners?
As proposed, Jason, they do not. Only one of the units would be rented, or, I'm sorry, only one of the units would have to be lived in by the owner of the property. So for example, you couldn't go buy a property out in the county, build a home, build an ADU, and then rent it to Shelley and I, you know, separately. You would have to live in one of the two. You could look at, in some, I should say, counties, very few counties have this provision yet. Some cities do require it to be family. We are not proposing that, but that could be something you want to talk about.
So what happens when the original owner then, five years, 10 years down the road, sells the property?
Well, they would sell the property with two homes. They would sell the property with one main home, and they would sell it together with the accessory dwelling unit. They're not allowed to be sold separate, as is currently proposed. If they wanted to do that, then they would have to meet all of their zoning controls, density, setbacks, size, thought size, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Angie, Jason Crow, and I, I'm okay with this, I mean, as far as allowing. So there could always be issues if it came to, like any, unfortunately, that good neighbors aren't always good neighbors. That's going to, it's going to be independent whether they're building accessory housing unit or not. So I'm okay.
Angie, this is Sean. I'm with Jason on that. I think these are all steps in the right direction.
Angie, Commissioner Persky, you know, I'm okay with it too. I'm just, I'm trying to be, look at what would be a bad scenario. Why, what would cause us not wanting to do this? Is there anybody out there that's got a scenario that, what would be a way that it would be effective or not a means by which we'd like to do it?
No, Joe, that's where I was at. I mean, other than people not being good neighbors, I don't know why this one makes sense.
Commissioner Persky, you know, we've tried to think through a lot of those scenarios, right? You know, okay, if we do this, then what could happen? I think what could happen is what Jason Wienerman brought up, you know, five, 10 years down the road, well, now they want to split it off, because now they don't, you know, they want to keep one of them and not have both. And we just have to remember that we have a process and rules for a reason, and so if they meet those rules and processes at the time, then they're able to. But if not, then they wouldn't be able to. I think from a financing perspective, this isn't going to be simple for everybody, because, you know, the mortgage industry can be restrictive in terms of, you know, mortgaging, mortgaging an accessory dwelling unit on a property that they don't have clear and free title to, because it's held by somebody else. So we deal with that. You know, Heidi and Jennifer, who work with people building a second home on a farm, are very upfront and say, you do need to talk to your bank, your lender first, because some lenders will not extend a mortgage to a situation like this. But not everybody needs a mortgage either, so we're trying to keep that in mind.
And Angie, Jeff Bertram. The one issue, obviously, that we were all, when we were trained, we were told, don't look at the person that's in front of you requesting something, look at who's going to own the property after that person. So the only concern would be that if suddenly you build a house for a relative or a family member, or somebody, a friend, that's going to help out with farming, or with the assistance of healthcare, whatever, and then 10, 20 years, that person sells it, and somebody all of a sudden moves out of the country, and then realizes that they don't necessarily care for the sights, sounds, and smells of farming, which, that's why we pushed back in the day to put that on the abstract, that those conditions existed before they bought the property. But that would be the only concern, but I think we've got that addressed, and I think it's a minimum concern, because we know it, we have it on our radar.
Yeah, that's a third factor. The restriction on the, of the buildings. Let's say, one is an older home, it's perhaps on its, you know, it's got a few more years in it. A person builds a smaller dwelling on there. We don't say which is the primary, which is the secondary, do we? In other words, could the person then, you know, move into the smaller home and then, you know, demolish the older one?
Certainly, that would be an option. And actually, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I don't know if you remember, but we had a scenario years ago where we changed our ordinance to basically do that. We said that you decide which one is your primary, and you can treat that as your legal nonconformity, and then your other one is your primary. So yes, that would be an option. And I switched back to this page real quick, just so everybody is clear, that the way it's proposed is that attached accessory dwelling units would be provisional across the board in all zoning districts, so you would not see these as a public hearing. Accessory dwelling units detached would be permitted in the Ag and Transitional District, and they would be conditional in the Residential District. Now, if you want to see those in front of you at your public hearings, this chart would need to change. So I would need you to say, I think these should all be conditional, if that's what you think. I'm not suggesting that that's what you should do, but I didn't want to gloss over that slide in case somebody didn't understand that point.
That is, Jeff Bertram brought up, the third potential limitation beyond insurance and beyond financing, and that's deed restrictions. So the point is, is that there are other entities that impact the way properties are handled in years. So it isn't just about us, that's all.
Unless there's any other final comments on accessory dwelling units, I think what I'm hearing is that there's a desire to move forward on this as a public hearing comment. Excuse me, I got to get my lights back on. Okay.
Yeah, just one, this is Commissioner Notch. Just one comment I would make. To me, adding a piece onto an existing dwelling would seem to be less intrusive, I think, than another standalone. You know, because like Jeff was saying, you know, you look at the next person, you know, how in the future do you handle having two homes on a parcel? Less ones that, like on skids or something, that you can move it off, but if it's attached, it's kind of like just an addition to the house, and, you know, you can go from there.
Commissioner Notch, that could be an option too. I mean, the county could look at only allowing them to be attached and not allowing a detached option. That's definitely a possibility.
Just another quick comment. So what if in the future, you know, if you call it a secondary assisted living kind of dwelling for a family member, and this probably was mentioned a little bit before, so if I owned, let's say, the main home, and now, let's say, my parents live there and they passed away, would, if I had a house and said, gee, I could maybe rent this out, would that require different permits and all that stuff then, right?
It would not. It would not, under this proposed scenario, it would not. Again, what's proposed is very liberal, I would say. You could be, the rules could be more conservative, and you could require it to be family, or, I don't want to say farm, because we deal with them differently, but you could require it to be family, you could require it to be attached, you could say you can't rent it. There's some challenges with enforcing that. But yeah, good, I'm glad that you're discussing these things now, because that would be some changes we could definitely look at, if there's some thoughts on that.
Although that would be kind of like a VRVO, you could have two for another revenue source, or let's say it's a farm place, or a rural residence. So there are some pluses and minuses.
Yeah, and a VRVO, oh, sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, who gets to decide what's a family member?
Right, and...
That needs to be a tricky question, too.
And we do, all zone, most zoning ordinances, including Stearns, does define family, and I don't have it in front of me, but it's, you know, basically related by blood, marriage, adoption, or up to, I forget how many, 10 unrelated people? That might not be 10. But you're right, from an enforcement standpoint, an administration standpoint, family does get difficult, but I'm not saying it couldn't be done.
Angie, at the beginning, did you say... Angie, at the beginning, did you say this would apply to mobile homes as well?
So, Commissioner Persky, the proposal is that in the agricultural districts, if somebody wants to have a detached accessory dwelling unit, they could use a mobile home as that detached accessory unit. But not if you're in the residential district, then it would need to be a stick-built structure.
And I guess, you know, and when, when it was family member, I guess I could understand that, you know, I had no trouble with that. But now, I'm just wondering, does that have a potential for something we don't want? If we just allow mobiles to come in and the ability then to rent them out?
Something, it's something to, to discuss. What I would, what I would say is that, and Shelley can pipe in here too, but there is some interest or thought that we do need to look at our rental ordinance in the county. I, I don't administer that ordinance, but it, it's very dated and there is some appetite, I think, for looking at the rental standards. So, there's a little bit more public health safety factors looked at for renting. Secondly, you, the board will be hearing a request from us in the future on mobile home parks and mobile homes in the county. We would like to require some specific additional standards when mobile homes are brought into the county to prevent some of the things that are going on right now. So, we're, we're trying to get a handle on it, but yes, that could be an unintended consequence or result of this.
Okay.
Angie, Jason Crowe, I think Commissioner Notch brought up a good point on the rental side of things. I, I guess I would have envisioned that if someone was going to rent this, additional structure out in the future, that there would be some, some rental guidelines that applied to other rentals in a county that would also apply to this. I, I don't know why it would be exclusive, I guess. And that's even if the original property owner built the accessory dwelling unit, a detached one, and rented it to their own children, for that matter. At some point, I think there needs to be some consistency in, in how rentals are treated. Although, we're gonna run into issues later on.
That's one of the reasons why we need to update the rental ordinance.
And, and something else I'll just hit on real quick, is that if the, if the example is given that they all of a sudden want to rent it out for less than 30-day periods, then it does become a vacation home rental and then it does come in front of you. The way the vacation home rental definition is written is that if you rent something out 30 days at a time, you know, with a bona fide lease, that is not a vacation home rental. But if you do it less than 30 days, then it becomes a vacation home rental and then it would need to be under an interim use. So, just to clarify.
Angie, Sean, I just want to point, I, I like the, the whole idea of the detached and, and the rules of only one and the size as it applies. I like the, we're also incorporating some freedoms here. We all, we want to talk all the time about flexibility and, and being, allowing landowners to do different things. This is just the classic mother-in-law cottage. It's, it's, it shouldn't be difficult. And if somebody can get another revenue stream by renting it out to somebody, then, then why not? We're, we're not restricting that and we're, we're trying to not be more restrictive here. So, I, I, I like the way this is.
Any final, final comments on ADUs before we move on? I saw thumbs up. I only see a couple people on my screen, but I'll move on. Okay, so I got, the next topic is agricultural employee housing and this gets to Commissioner Mergan, your comment or, or question. So, again, the living pillar talks about providing options, safe viable options. So, we're gonna talk about ag employee housing. These are just a few screenshots, none of which are in the county, but of what they could look like, right? So, the one on the left, you could have some of your workers up above the barn. You could have a separate unit. You could have a bunch of different units next to each other where you rent them out to various family units. So, again, we hit on the ag pillar. We hit on, you know, some of the specific policies that were looked at in the comp plan and that was to look at workforce housing. And then, so that's really what we're proposing to you tonight is to consider affordable workforce housing as a way to continue to support the agricultural areas. So, again, we talk about this in various parts of our comprehensive plan. We, we are very specific about allowing workforce housing and accessory dwelling units that we just talked about. So, that gives us the basis for, for the discussion tonight. Now, we're gonna focus on the top half of the screen and those are the farm housing options. So, in red is obviously their new proposed district, or not district, the new proposed use, agricultural employee housing. So, this would be a, either a provisional or interim use in the ag districts. We would like some dialogue on that. And the last change that you'll see here, it's the last item under 6.56.2, single-family second home for ag operation. Currently, those are interim. You do see those. We are, we're throwing it out there for consideration to make those provisional. The county has, has allowed this for over 20 years. We've never had issues with them. There's rarely public in opposition. And so, again, in the spirit of making it a bit easier for people to apply for permits, we would, we're proposing to make that provisional and no longer interim. So, Becky Schlerf, our feedlot supervisor, helped us provide a survey to the medium-sized farms in the county and don't ask me what those animal unit numbers were, but it was, you know, more than 100 and less than 1,000. So, we, we did a survey. I'm not gonna go through this, but you'll see kind of a mixed bag. But definitely, there's some desire from farmers in Sterns County to have employee housing. And I think that gets at Commissioner Mergan's question or comment as well. So, the proposed definitions are located here. So, we would look at defining an ag employee as somebody who works on the farm. Again, the proposal, which is open for discussion, is that you're required to work on the farm at least 20 hours a week for half the year, basically, 180 days. And then we have group living quarters would be a structure containing, consisting of three or more sleeping rooms. So, that would be more of a bunkhouse scenario, if you want to think about it like that. And so, here's our performance standards that are proposed for ag employee housing. So, again, this would be either permitted or interim. We, we would like you to have discussion on that. These are the standards they'd have to meet. They have to be accessory to a feedlot. We're not proposing that, that there's a minimum size to that feedlot. That could be an option for discussion if you think that a farm should have to be so big to get this. Less than four attached or 12 beds in, in a group living. So, again, open for discussion, but we're proposing that you could have four units attached or you could have one big structure with 12 beds. It needs to be located in the existing farmyard, has to use the same road access unless approved by the road authority. The ADU or temporary house, like we're talking about, the employee housing would not count towards density. So, if a farmer came to us, they had 160 acres in the A160 zoning district and said, we want to build an ag employee housing, we, we would say, you can do that. We don't have to look for, for density. So, that's an important thing to understand. And then we're proposing that it would be, this use is just continued after two years and then there would be a signed statement that the property owner would be aware of that. I'm gonna take a breath and, and say that I know that there's some vagueness written into this. There's, what I will also say is that with enforcement of various zoning provisions, it's done by complaint. And so, would we, you know, we're looking at, Commissioner Percy, your comment earlier, what are the potential downsides? Well, the potential downside is that the farm's no longer a farm and then how are they gonna do with this structure or structures? That's, I guess, remains yet to be seen, but considering our ag pillar is very strong in the county and, and our task is to look at promoting agriculture, we're, we're trying to do that with these standards and, and not be too limiting.
Angie, could you go to the previous slide? The one or two before, one more before. What do I see? Are they employed in such a way at least 180 days within a year? Are you saying that they would have to be employed for 180 days?
Correct.
And I'm just curious, do we have any, you know, more seasonal employees that would be actually less than that? That would maybe use this type of housing?
I'm gonna just pull up this real quick. Commissioner Persky, do I have it on here? I do. It's the top one. That would fall under migrant seasonal worker housing. So, that is an option. It's an interim use currently in the, in the zoning ordinance and that allows for occupancy limited to six months a year. So, I know in the Belgrade-Bruton area, there's some migrant seasonal housing that's in the city. I think of Bruton, not out in the county, but, but yes, we do allow for and have never permitted a migrant seasonal worker housing. So, that could be an option.
And, and I'm just wondering if there's, is there something wrong that with, with doing that? To allow it? I, I'm throwing that out.
To allow the migrant seasonal worker housing?
Correct, correct.
It exists. It, it's allowed now. It's an option. It's been in the zoning ordinance since 2000, I believe.
Correct.
Angie, Jeff Bertram, and you're right, it is in Bruton. I was gonna bring up the Bruton migrant housing. The city built it to support the rural area. And it operates, I mean, really, if there's issues or whatever, they're dealt with. But again, just like the other issues we talked about earlier, who would have thought 10 years ago that this would be needed? Who would have thought dairies would have gotten as big as they are? And a lot of the dairy activity, they really do rely on workers to be on-site, especially the dairies that milk three times a day. They need to have their employees close and it eliminates having to commute and having them to live in further away places. So, the only thing I'm not clear on, Angie, is discontinuance of use after two years. You mean, they can't do it after two years anymore?
Oh, sorry. Good question. Maybe we need to clarify that in the, in the proposal. I might have, I might have just abbreviated it too much. But the idea is that once you're no longer using the housing for farm use is that you, that then the use needs to cease. So, yeah, so, and, and I'll look at the ordinance to make sure that that's written a little bit more clearly. But the idea is if you're no longer in need of the housing, then, then you need to stop renting it out, I guess, is, is the other way to say it.
Got it. So, it's not being used for the farm use after two years. There are no workers there or anything. Yeah, that makes sense. I do believe, just to start with, just because it's relatively new to us, an interim use permit might be a best way to start it. Other counties do allow it. I believe Kennewa County does. There's several large dairies and they literally just build migrant. The only issue, which again, we don't get involved in, is it, is it up to standards? You know, we wouldn't want to support housing being built that would put the workers not in a good situation. So, with us not doing the permitting, I don't know how we control that. But in, in Bruton, I can tell you originally, whatever they had before they built what they built, they were literally dirt floors and the blankets separated the families. That was it. But the migrant workers needed a place to stay. They needed them in the rural Bruton, Bruton area. And so, it was better than nothing. But we certainly don't want to encourage or allow substandard housing. And I don't know how we control that or maybe that's addressed. I'm not sure.
Angie, Jeff Mergan, it sounds like what, what's being proposed here, maybe I'm misunderstanding, is, is pretty much bunkhouse situations? The owner that talked to me about this was more, he wanted to build an eightplex where the workers and their families could be there. And so, I don't know, is that been addressed or not?
So, Commissioner Mergan, it is. And, and the current proposal, which again, is, is open to discussion, is that you'd be allowed up to four attached. So, if, you know, the idea would be, and we've had requests for this, right? If somebody wants to build, you know, a, a row of homes and, and like you said, the individual families move in, the proposal is no more than four. So, this number of four could, oops, could change. So, it would be either or, right? So, you either have a bunkhouse scenario or you have four attached.
Okay, thank you.
And that number certainly could change. If there's some discussion on that, would be helpful too for our public hearing purposes.
And Angie, this is Steve. I know we've had this conversation a while back where the, some of the turkey farm owners used to have mobile homes on their turkey farms for the employees. And then we went through that timeframe where, you know, nobody wanted to live on the turkey farm, so they moved into town. So, the, the farm owners got rid of the mobile homes and then now all of a sudden they want to get the employees back on those farms and they don't have a housing credit to put, you know, a mobile home back on there again. So, you know, that's one thing that's been brought to my attention for housing.
I, I think, Steve, maybe we've talked to some of the same farmers on that. And so, that is why we're proposing that this use not need density. And, and so that would become a little bit more flexible again.
Right.
So, if I understood this correctly, Jason Crowe here, by the way. Currently, this is allowed under an interim use permit, interim use permit. Is that accurate?
Currently, Jason, we only allow a second home on a farm and so this is not currently allowed.
Okay, okay. Thanks for that clarification. I misunderstood that earlier. Because to Jeff's point, you know, in some ways, I'd like to make this easier for people. You know, in the case that Commissioner Notch just brought up, you know, there used to be mobile homes there. Hate to go through an entire process where they have to go through an interim use permit and, and get that approval if it's something like adding a mobile home or two, something that had in the past. But if they are bigger units, you know, to Commissioner, to Mr. Bertram's point, it probably makes some sense to have an idea of what, what's being requested and just make sure that people aren't going to be put into unsafe living environments too. I can see both sides, but a lot of it depends on the size and the amount of units that are being asked for. So, just a thought. I don't know the right or wrong answer.
If, if I can make one more comment, this is Commissioner Notch. You know, Jeff and I were on CASM this morning and we kind of brought up, and we're having this discussion tonight. And I did get a text from a farmer today and this was his comment. He said, my two cents worth about a farm apartments. I think better in small town with farm-sponsored ride service. But like I mentioned before, I know some of these farmers that told me, they'll actually hire individuals who maybe don't have driver's license, don't have, you know, access to motor vehicle. So, getting them on the farm is more beneficial to them because they know they'll be at work and they'll show up for work. So, you know, this, this is a good thought, but I don't think it's gonna solve a lot of the issues either.
Great minds thinking parallel. That's what I was, that was my thought. You know, there's housing out there if it's not right on-site. If they can have a twice-a-day commute, you know, once out and once back. And there are, I would think that there's enough ride possibilities to do that. You know, the commercial providers, at least in the short run, that'd be worth a try. But I don't have a problem with additional onsite housing, but I think that there's more flexible options.
Any thoughts or discussion on the number of four? Or do we propose at public hearing, the four or less? Thoughts on that?
Just Jeff's comment about the request for eight. I mean, if you're that big of operation, you know, and it's an adequate structure, I guess, you know, would we want to limit it to that? You know, thinking like a motel-type structure, you know, all on one flat, limiting it to four, I mean, could you have six or could you have eight? I don't know.
Maybe we could go with the four and, but make it flexible where they would come and ask for a variance, where that's an option.
I also maybe think that we should just go to 16 beds, just make it four per four.
Jason Crown, I'm good with both those proposals, both Jeff and Sean.
A discontinuance after two years, would, should we add, should we think about something like, after two years, they reapply? Or they ask for an extension and extension won't be unreasonably withheld? And I don't know what the standards would be, but I would think one reasonable one would be no sheriff calls. No?
Right, so Commissioner Lenzmeyer, what I'm hearing is that there's a desire to, at least by some of the members, is to require or allow it as an interim use and not permitted. So if it's by interim use, they could, I would say with this sort of potential investment, you're gonna see people asking for 20, 30, 40 years. So yes, they would have the option at that time to come back and ask for an extension. The other option is you could allow this as a conditional use and not tie it towards the time or an event. So that's also another option.
Angie, this is Ken Mossman. There's one thing that hasn't been brought up here now. When she did the survey, you said she did the middle-sized farms. That's really not fair. She should have done the small farms too. Because I know a lot of small farmers might say, "We're just making it that much easier for this big farm to get bigger." And I don't want this big farm because he's putting me out of business down here. So what is the small farmer's thought on the big farmer being allowed to put an apartment building right next to their barn for their help? Make it a little harder for that guy, then he can't increase and put me out of business. Because in Sterns County, we're losing, I don't know if it's as bad as it was a year or two ago, but we're losing six or eight a week sometimes. And I guess she should have surveyed everybody. I guess that's my thought.
Yeah, and with that, I'll take the blame for that. I suggested that to Becky because that's who we've been hearing from. But you're right, Ken, and we want to hear from all of the public, including the small and large feedlots. So the survey was just more of a gauge to is there interest or need in that feedlot sector, that group? But we will do our best to continue to spread the word on this public hearing, which will be sometime in probably April or May, through Feedlot Review Committee. The commissioners, you can talk about it on CASM, that's great. The Dairy Advisory Committee, you know, we're gonna try to spread the word as much as we can and the commissioners would welcome hearing from any and all-sized feedlots.
Angie, Jason, we never hear, if we issue a permit, conditional or interim or however we do it, two, three years down the road, we learn that the individual who owns the property is a bad actor, maintaining substandard housing, hiring undocumented workers, how does that reflect on the permit? Can we revoke the permit at that point or is that outside of our hands?
I'll comment quickly on the unsafe standards and I think that's again where we need to, we need to look at our rental ordinance and solidify and get that better. And then Shelley, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you had some experience with it in Benton County in terms of undocumented workers. I don't have an answer for you on that tonight, but we could certainly talk about that some more.
Related to undocumented workers, what happened was essentially the person who was hiring those parties ended up in trouble with the federal government related to how they were obtaining the workers and had to pay fines and go through a significant process. So what we were trying to do is maintain that they had a reasonable place to live and we did inspections and checked to see that they were in compliance for that. We didn't check their status. That wasn't a part of what we did, but their status was being questioned by someone else who had turned them in through a different process and then we ended up understanding how that process worked. So it was through the federal government. And the immigration status was questioned at that point, so.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, if we do approve a permit and we find the person's a bad actor, do we have the opportunity to revoke the permit? If the owner's violating statute law?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's a process.
Yes, and that's a good point. In an ordinance, we say you also have to comply with all federal, state, and local regulations. So zoning might be kind of the low, the low toe on the totem pole for a situation like that, but it could, we could look at that.
See, Angie, this is Rich. Going back to Ken's comment about smaller operation and looking at the proposals here, I'm thinking maybe we could open this up a little more so in regards to what size building, how many people. As each business or farmer comes forward and requests an approval at that time, we would approve the size of the building or the, how many people can be there? Because I think of a smaller farmer, there's a pretty good chance that maybe three or four family members move on one farm site, but they reach out to three or four smaller farmers that are contingent to one another. So I'm just thinking, we could make this more flexible for the farmers and for the workers.
And Rich, are you suggesting we do that by allowing it as a permitted use? Or do you support the idea of interim? Or maybe you could just help me understand that a bit better?
Well, which is the appropriate way to go with this in regards to, is it an interim or is it a CUP? But I'm just, I'm just thinking, how can we make that more flexible than us stating you can only have four units? Or you can only have eight units or whatever? I'm just thinking, what we're gonna see are different sized farm needs. And as time goes on, maybe some of our farms are going to expand and say, "Oh, gosh, we built this building for four units and we really need to have six." You know, so can they come back and get permitted for two more? I'm just thinking, we need to kind of be a little bit more flexible in regards to that. You know, setting the limits so tight?
I'll quickly respond to that and I think Jeff, maybe you were piping in here too. I think that we could, we could look at rewording it to eliminate the number altogether, the four or the 12 and somehow come up with language that would offer the number of units based on the size of the feedlot. And then that, again, that would definitely need to be an interim or conditional use. Staff doesn't want to, that would be a public process, right? So then they would come to you and say, "Here's how many we would like and here's why." And then you would be the judge of that. If there's interest in that, we could, we could look at writing something up related to that.
What if, what if a group of two or three smaller farmers came with a proposal to build one side, one unit? You know, that would house four families on one farm? Are we flexible enough with something like that?
Under the proposal, it needs to be on the farm, that, one of the farms that they own. So no, that would not be, that's not currently a proposed option. Not saying we couldn't try to write that, it definitely would be a bit more tricky.
Angie, Jeff Bertram, not to get too deep into the weeds, but two things you might want to just have on your radars, depending on how many we allow, storm shelters, obviously would become an issue. Nine out of 10 times, these units would not be built with basements. They would probably be like patio-type homes. And so you'd want to, somewhere you'd want to make sure we have it on our radar, not creating any problem like we've had with some trailer parks where we've got storm shelters. And then somebody said something about the potential issues. You know, that's all going to determine and depend on the person that allows the home. The trailer park on the west side of Melrose had numerous issues. No storm shelter, low livability standards. There was up to three families in a trailer home, working three shifts a genio. And when you have a husband working one shift and a wife working another shift, a lot of social issues, the police department could have just as well moved in one of them because they were out there all the time. So again, not to get too deep in the weeds, but let's be proactive knowing that these things have happened and the county did have to step in. That was in the city limits, but same situation, different areas. So let's not, let's make sure we don't recreate some issues. But I think we need to do the housing. I mean, the operations of dairy, turkey, others have gotten so big, they need labor. And getting the labor is important and we need to do something with housing to allow that farm labor to be close, in my opinion.
And I think, Jeff, we could, we could look at that storm shelter provision requirement in the rental housing ordinance. But I may even note to add that into the proposed standard as a tie to the rental ordinance. So I think what it comes down to in terms of the number is, is if you want to be the judge and jury of how many somebody can get, then you eliminate the total number, you eliminate the four and the 12 and then we tie it to the number of animal units on the farm or not. The second option would be, there's, as Commissioner Mergan said, the Board of Adjustment does exist to provide relief of the ordinance. So you could leave it up to them to decide if somebody should be allowed to have more. Either is an option.
So Angie, just a question on that. Is this strictly related to feedlots or should it be open to other ag operations?
So currently, Jason, it is proposed to be accessory to a feedlot, a registered feedlot. That could be extended to something different. We did talk about that a bit internally and with the consultants. The idea is, as we talked about near Bruton, you know, for some of the sugarbeets or, you know, up near rice for some of the potato farmers, typically those are, those are more seasonal, right? And so we didn't, nor have I had a crop farmer in the county come to me and ask these questions. That doesn't mean that there's not a need. But yes, currently it's proposed to be accessory to a feedlot. If you want to open that up to be accessory to an ag operation, that would just be, again, allowing it to be a bit more subjective, which is a choice. So good question, yeah, definitely some, some things to think about or comments. I'd be interested in other thoughts on that, that would be a big shift.
Jason Crown here, great question, Jason, number one. I guess based on Angie's definition, I think it makes sense sticking with the feedlot or the logic or reasoning behind it. Being that if it is agriculture, it is typically going to be temporary. So I appreciate the explanation, good question, Jase.
Yeah, Commissioner Notch here too. I think I would stick more with the animal agriculture, feedlot end of it, more so than maybe more of the cropping, seasonal enterprises.
I'm thinking, so I understand that the cropping would probably be more the short term, but would this also possibly include ag-oriented businesses?
Jason, it could if that egg-oriented business has an animal feedlot.
Okay.
So I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head that, obviously we've talked about Redhead Creamery, not to pick on them tonight. They're a great business and a good example. If they would have a need for employee housing for their egg-oriented business, for the cheese-making, that, again, the way I think it's worded, yeah, so the way it's worded is it primarily engaged in the ag operation. So I think you could look at that being either, right? You could look at it being either they're milking the cows or they're making the cheese. That's how I see it.
Because I'm just thinking, the winery here by Wade Park, if they wanted to, if they wanted to build housing for somebody who worked in the winery processing but also was staff of the sales barn, would that, could that be, if we were to expand the use, would that be an acceptable use?
If you did, if you would take away the feedlot requirement, then those are the sorts of situations that you're opening it up to.
Okay.
Not to belabor the number, the number of four or 12, but is there, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a little bit more direct question. So is, do you think that the proposal goal that goes out to public hearing should have a more general standard for allowing, requiring the planning commission and the board to set what an appropriate number is? Or do you prefer it to be the number of four or 12 and relief would come from the Board of Adjustment?
Angie, Jeff Bertram, whenever we start something new, it's always the best, I think, to walk down the hill and not run down the hill. This is gonna be a new concept and plus, we're seeking the public input. So if we throw it out there the way you have it composed and then we start getting a lot of feedback saying, "Well, that's not big enough" or "It doesn't allow for enough", we can react at that point. Or then if it does get implemented, we certainly can act with it by changing an ordinance down the road and/or using the Board of Adjustment. So I think just because it's new, it might serve us best to start, you know, with some finite numbers and then see how it goes before we open this wide open, would be my two cents.
I concur with Jeff and four and 12 sound good to me, or four and 16. Sean mentioned 16 earlier, I'm coming with you there.
You know, I agree too, you know, this should be a win-win for both the farmer and, but also for the employee. You know, we don't want to see an overcrowded situation because things are built too small. And so, you know, if they need more space, we should be allowing them to build that space, I guess. But, but having a starting point is fine and then leaving it up to the Board of Adjustment, I think that's, that's fine.
Okay, understood, thank you. Any other final thoughts or comments on, on this particular use? Okay. Well, that, that basically concludes our discussion for tonight in terms of rural housing and rural tourism. We will move forward on some of these changes along with changes that you will be presented in the future for a public hearing sometime. I'm anticipating it to be April or May. We are going to be talking about feedlots and septic systems on February 22nd. And so the good news for you guys is you don't have to hear me talk anymore. You're going to get to hear from Mark Lateral and Becky Schlorf. They will be present and doing their presentation. Thank you all for also, on, on a related note, in March, we'll be talking about mining operations and subdivisions. So thank you all for commenting on some questions that we want to ask other counties related to mining. And, and I've done that for the subdivision and you'll see that in a couple of months. But I appreciate everybody's time and preparation for this evening and time tonight. This good discussion, good thoughts. If you come up with any burning ideas or concerns or questions, you know how to get ahold of me.
Say, Angie, just when you brought up mining, I happened to look through that. Did I see anything about lighting? You know, we did have a question about, about lighting on the, on the mining. You know, how that can be adverse. So just.
Yeah. And Heidi's on the call to Commissioner Persky and she's going to take that issue up for us, the mining. So that's a good, yes, that's a good one to add to the list. Thank you.
Thanks, Angie. Looking forward to talking about Suge next month.
Thanks, everyone. That concludes the meeting.
Thank you, Angie.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you all.
Thank you.